... I'm going to call the meeting. The board of the district, gentlemen. The wetlands side to the house.
Mrs. Larry?
They put dirt.
You are the board.
Well, they're in the board.
If any of you have a phone, please turn it to Simon for the rest of the meeting. And please join us for the rest of the evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll call the role. Our district attorney, Tony Pierce is present. Supervisor Tingle is present. Supervisor Banks will not be here today. Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Clarity, and our district manager, Mr. Sheenmaker. And if anyone wants to address the board, there's sheets in the back to fill out. And if you'll get them to Mr. Sheenmaker, we think you two can get to speak. And with that in mind, do we have anybody who's signed up?
Yes, we have, first, Mr. Jim Brand out along Lake Circle. We'll go back, Mr. Brand.
I'm James Brand. I've got a new title. I'm the correspondent for government affairs for Hampton Park HOA.
Holy cow.
That's a heck of a title, isn't it, Bill?
It is.
Today, I want to discuss pigs in Hampton Park. Oh, if it were only funny. So, Chris, I've given Chris a video that one of our residents took. So, Chris, or Mike, can you start that video for everybody, please? If you watch closely, you can see the black pigs back there in the back. Then our resident goes up close to them. That's about as far as it gets.
That's a lot of bears.
There she is.
There were about 20 of them, and no, they're not good eating because they are not fat. So, over the last several weeks, multiple pigs, at least two males, you saw them at the very end, one female, and 10 piglets have invaded Hampton Park. They are living in the preserve between Fairmont and Belcrest, coming out at night or early in the morning. This morning, one of our residents sitting in the back of the room, she had them out in her yard at seven, and then again at 10:00 in the morning. Two of the homeowners impacted are Marty Winbird of 12-510-Fairmont and Jesslyn Taylor of 12-518, and then a third resident, Dave, and I'm not going to mess up your last name, Sarah Matrum. He lives at 12-513-Fairmont. They've all had their yards pulled up. We need the assistance of the district to have those pigs removed from the district-owned preserve. They come out of the preserve, they get into private property. Our residents are prepared to give you permission. Our HOA is prepared to give you permission. We have two members of our HOA board that are here, Guy Lindholm and Ted Meek. I think Ted you're going to speak, right? Ted's going to speak. So, we're looking for your assistance to remove the pigs, put traps in. We're also looking for what other recommendations that the district can make to homeowners to protect their property. So, I'm open to questions if you have any. Kathy?
Hi. I was just talking to Al about that this morning when we went out. We do have a trapper.
I know that. I talked to Chris about it.
Yeah, and I said the same thing because they're not only there, they're coming out in Gateway Boulevard, and they're destroying the property there, too. So, we were talking about what to do. So, it has, it's not you. I'm just telling you.
And I think they're going for behind Belcrest. I don't think they can get into Stony Brook anymore because of your wonderful fence. I've proposed to our board that we build a fence, but so far, they want to cough up $80,000. I understand that. So, is there anything, Chris, that our head or Margaret, Guy, Mr. Guy, Kathy, that you all can recommend that homeowners do?
I think, other than a trapper, I really, I personally don't know of anything other than having a trapper, you know?
Get rid of your grubs.
We have one of our neighbors, Jocelyn, who put $300 worth of grub kill stuff out over the last three weeks.
That's good for him. That'd be helpful to people.
This is her yard.
There's no way to stop those things.
They like, they like them.
Or guns.
So, Chris, I don't know what you need to do or what you need to tell me to do to have your trapper come into Hampton Park. We would welcome that.
I'll wait for Mr. Meek, and then we'll make some comments from the board and staff side and staff attorney side.
Okay, great, thank you.
Pelican Preserve has had them, and the HOA's hired a trapper to get rid of them.
It costs lots of money.
It costs somebody money.
Good point. Mr. Ted Meek?
Yep.
Welcome.
Chris?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ted Meek. I'm the vice president of the HOA in Hampton Park. And we had a board meeting last night, and it was brought to our attention that the CDD was unable to give us a hand unless they had the permission of the homeowners and the association. And the board, we discussed it last night, and I'm here to advise the CDD that we are 100% behind you guys coming into the subdivision to be able to set traps and help us remove these animals, and we will work with you in any way that we can. And that's all I can say of those films, let's set it up.
Thank you. We did talk to the trapper. We were having issues over by the swimming pool and other areas. We have some traps on the backside there, and he said he did have a trap available he could put in the preserve. I'd also like to hear from district council on the legalities involved with these animals.
From the district's perspective, the district has no duty with regards to this, in my opinion. You have wild animals that are roaming around. We are not reducing them possession. We've not invited them into our district property. And in the flow of law, if you don't have a duty, you don't have liability. If you take honor duty that you do not otherwise have as a matter of law, you better do it right, or you could be sued, the negligence or damages that could occur. So, arguably, if we take on this duty that we, the district does not have, and we only get 10 out of 20, and somebody's going to say, "You didn't do the job right," and we're going to come after you, to sue you for recovery of any damages we suffer. So, I might, from a legal perspective, again, the district does not have any duty to try to trap these. And I think, like Pelican Preserve, like the suggestion was made, the property owners hire a trapper to engage in the necessary activities. And as far as the knowledge and experts, this board isn't that, experts, the wildlife folks that have the knowledge and expertise as to how to handle it. I know this came up about two years ago also, if I'm not mistaken. We have hogs running around, or two years ago. Mr. Brand, I think.
Right after Irma.
The trapper that we're using right now has been totally exclusively used for common property of the HOA or the CDD, I'm sorry.
Preserve area, I think.
But it's our CDD property.
Or the district's landscaping, as Mrs. Larry mentioned.
It's by the swimming pool.
What about?
By the front gate where people come in in the mornings. And he's removed some hogs there, but again, if you have a dozen or 13 trying to trap them, it'd be a good chore.
What about the HOAs? Because this is throughout Gateway. You have Hampton Park come in, we'll have Gateway Greens come in. Everybody's got them. Everybody's got the hogs. And it is a nightmare. What about a release or an indemnification submitted by the HOA requesting it to lessen the liability and do it that way?
Arguably, if the district was to wish to engage in that, I would suggest it be a whole harmless indemnification, each and every property owner, because that's what's involved, is individual property owners. And again, it's not just the HOA.
That could be a pretty challenging deal, because I know Gateway Greens has 1,330 homes. That would be a challenge. And some people wouldn't sign something if they were giving away a $1,000 bill for every object.
And I can see where situations, we have a trapper's place done some private property and some dog, cat, domestic dog, domestic cat, animal, child, somebody wanders into and gets hurt. And what you can't, when there's no duty, there's no liability. When you take honor duty, there you are.
In the preserve area, is, you said they could trap some of the preserve area also?
They could.
They could.
In that preserve area, sometime, too, though, when you trap them and take them out, another group will come in, just like an alligator in a lake who leaves because of the knowledge, and everyone comes in, so you still have the alligator. Tough question.
I certainly don't have a problem with doing it just to eliminate, if we can reduce or, I don't think they don't eliminate exposure, but I think you can get it down to the point where you can live with it. But again, we're going to have to offer this to everybody in Gateway that's got a problem. Because you'll have the HOAs lining up, just they all have the problem. They all have the problem. And then what have they got, what is our trapper? I know with the trapper over in the HOA I was familiar with, they had a trapper come in there, they usually put corn or jelly beans in the trap. They come in there, they come in there with a rifle, and they shoot them on the spot and then haul them off. Is that how our trapper here works?
They carry them off. They don't shoot them on sight.
They don't shoot them on sight.
They discharge a firearm in residential area.
He did it right there on the spot.
Can we have them set some traps in the preserve area? I mean, even if, even if we can eliminate some of them, that would be better than not catching, trying to catch any of them.
Well, we can, we can put them in there, and I'll defer to the council's opinion because we may be creating a big problem for ourselves unless we have that indemnification.
No, I guess the question is, from some, from the perspective of the preserve area, my understanding is that if this happens tonight, the property out in the belt, and they start rooting around the wetlands and get all kinds of grain seeds, like the zucchini pepper seeds and everything else, and they're all rooted, you end up with more of a maintenance nightmare. So, I think the district has generally, you know, utilized that type of property to let the agencies know we're trying to avoid it being disruptive, you know, the root, the rooting that goes on in those areas.
I can still see doing the indemnification from the HOA rather than going back to each and every other property owner. Is that, that's an ideal. If you've got hogs in Lot A, and you've got lots B and C, and if one signs the other two down, you're kidding yourself. It's not doing any good. I bet you I'd see the exposure and the protection and indemnification from the HOA.
And I could speak for, I think Ted and I will speak for the board. Identification from the HOA would be not a problem. Identify yourselves. Ted?
I'm Guy Lindholm, Hampton Park Board Member, breaker.
You say that the HOA would not have a problem with indemnifying them?
None.
I don't think any of the HOAs will.
And from a practical standpoint, we can set traps and start removing them, you know, but if we keep getting phone calls, "They're not gone yet, they're not gone yet." Well, we have the traps out there. We're trying, but, you know, I couldn't make a promise we could eliminate.
On the other hand, we're not offering any guarantee that we're going to get rid of them either.
Right.
I don't, I don't have any problem at all putting traps on CDD-owned property like the preserve, but I think you're opening up a can of worms when you're talking about individual homeowners' properties. Because if, if something were to happen to a pet, or like you said, a child, then you've got a whole different problem.
Yeah, and issue with, I mean, a whole harmless indemnification sounds nice. However, you have to try to report it, because what might happen is if there is a claim of negligence against the district, then we'd have to vote that whole harmless involved in the HOA, try to get them involved in the litigation, have them pay for all the defense, and then we'd be dealing with them without paying the fees, the insurance. It just seems a little difficult. And I guess one other assurance the board wants to go with, I need assurance that the board of directors has authorized and has the ability to properly authorize, to find the valid whole harmless indemnification, to find the association, and which makes each member liable for increased assessments for any points.
Well, if we do them in the wetlands, we've got 48 wetlands that are due out of this community, which predominantly, where these things are either hiding there, or they're hiding in the area between Castoya, on the Gateway Green side, Castoya and the golf course, and/or there in the FPL East. That's about their only habitat, habitats left. Everything else is gone. So, if we're going to do the conservation areas, then I think you're going to be going to 48 conservation areas.
Well, as issues pop up, that may be true, but we know we have an issue in Hampton Park. I saw this on the news the other night. I was like, wow. I saw it on Channel 7. Is the HOA against trying to get your own trapper to come in to work on individual
We haven't discussed that yet. It brought the board's attention last night. And so, we discussed it in general terms. No, we're not opposed to doing that. It's just, how do we go about doing it and then trying not to do something counter to what the CDD is trying to do, that kind of stuff, so. But no, we're not opposed to that as well.
Are we charged by this trapper? Or is he doing it on his own?
I believe he's doing it on his own. No, no, he's, he gets paid per.
Home caught?
High, yes.
Per home caught?
Yes.
And that number is?
I forgot how many else told me, but we've been dealing with this for a couple of weeks, because we were talking about it, because we should see what the pool looks like when we go around. But I asked, and there's, like Mr. Brand said, there's piglets. There's a whole bunch of little piglets.
Be nice to know what it costs to do this, because if, I don't know how many were in that picture, but it looked like a dozen at least.
And we're not sure on the preserves, what we.
Yeah, go ahead, because I was told to use.
In some cases.
I'd like to know.
We need an answer from staff, but if we're being charged for not doing it, it makes a big difference.
If I called Mr. Tingle, Supervisor Tingle, I was told by Chris that this trapper that's doing it for you all does not charge.
That's what I was told.
Pardon?
That's what I was told, so that's why I wanted her to bear.
It's like we have a story.
So, that was why I said, "Well, gee, can we have that done for Hampton Park?" And that's why we're here today.
Yeah, if that's the case, why wouldn't the HOA be able to let that guy do the same, do the same thing?
Exactly.
Well, the question is, going into the preserve property, it's not our property.
Well.
The preserve would be a differentiation.
Right.
But as private property owners, you could do that.
Yeah.
I don't think we're against trying to trap them in the preserve area as the CDD. It's the individual properties that make it very difficult.
Yeah. Well, they come out of the preserve, they've been hit with property and go back to the preserve.
Right back to the preserve.
Right. So, if we're catching them in there, and you're catching them on individual properties, we should at least be able to.
Winnow the herd.
There's Al back there. She can maybe answer the question.
Yeah, it's about Ellen. I asked her.
And I was under the impression it was a $7,000. The last time, it was a $7,000, it cost $7,000, is what I was told.
Al, yes, please.
Hi, good afternoon. Al Harris, Gateway Services District. And I was asked, and you have a question about.
How much are we paying the trapper to try and track the pigs in Hampton Park?
$10 a head. And they will be putting the trap in the little wetland in Hampton Park. They hope to have it in there this weekend. I did get permission from South Porta Water Management to do so.
Excellent.
Because it has to be, we're going to have to put the trap inside the wetland, and it's a very tiny one. So, I will get permission from the district before I do that.
That's a good idea. Can you share the information with the Hampton Park HOA? The two board members are standing behind you, that possibly they can contact this same person and make a deal with him, so to go on individual property owners?
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, anybody else?
Rod Senior of Ben Pine Drag Gate agrees. Soccer, coming from the old country, of course, soccer's a very dear to my heart. It's the fastest-growing sport in America. And it's this game that is attractive to both sexes and all ages. And Lake County is in desperate need of more soccer facilities. My proposal for you to consider today is to turn our soccer complex over to Lake County, and that benefits all parties as follows. Number one, from a cost point of view, it's costing us, I'm guessing, I haven't seen the budget, but probably towards quarter of a million dollars a year to look after our soccer fields. And then there's the capital improvement program for the floodlights, and I'm not sure what the next few years of cost is going to be to maintain and replace our floodlights. Big cost that is borne by gateway, greater gateway residents, not Pelican Preserve residents. Forty percent of the 800 kids who play soccer on our soccer fields, forty percent of those kids don't live in Gateway. And from that standpoint, I think it's fairer to spread the cost burden across Lake County than on the heads of the people that live in Gateway. There's a growing need in this locality because, as we probably know, JetBlue Park, those soccer facilities are stretched. The, three of those six fields are taken up through the baseball, the spring training season for car parking. But that'll, even then, for the rest of the year, those soccer facilities are stretched, and that Lake County is going forward in need of more soccer facilities. From, not just a cost point of view, but from the Gateway Soccer Association's point of view and flag football, you may or may not know that Lake County do not charge anything to institutions like those for youth soccer. Those are free. You guys charge, and we want GSA and flag football to succeed. It's a big deal for Gateway, I get that. If those soccer fields belong to Lake County, then those youth soccer programs will be free under their current program. I was on the board, I had discreet discussions with the people in power at Lake County together with Kaltik. Those are discreet, I didn't want to raise the profile. There was some interest level. I'm talking about Pendigrass, Pete Winton, Roger Desjardins, those guys down there. There's an interest level. Of course, to make it happen, it's not going to happen in 2019. It's something that might take a year or two to get on their radar screen. It's going to require two more commissioners to approve this thing. But there is an advantage from us because it spreads the cost burden. There's an advantage to GSA, which would be grandfathered into such a transfer, and that will be important, so they don't get squashed out. And then, of course, they get the benefit of not being charged for youth soccer. And I think that with the school being built on Griffin, I think there's going to be a growing need for more soccer facilities from that standpoint as well. I don't know how much, I haven't looked at the, I haven't looked at the new soccer, sorry, the new school facility. I don't know whether they've got soccer, how much soccer, but I think, I think there's going to be an increased pressure on soccer facilities in this area. So, I wondered whether, if, I wanted to plant a seed, and instead of doing it in the shadows, let's bring in the sunlight and see whether it's a real viable idea. And if so, would one of you consider making a motion to allow the district manager to have some exploratory, early discussions with the county to establish their level of interest?
Right. When you.
Tony knows that we talked about this before, Tony, many times.
When you had the discussion before, was it in the form of, we would lease the property to them? It would be a lease?
I'm talking about transferring ownership, like we did the roads.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
As opposed to a lease?
Yeah.
I know we can transfer stuff to another governmental agency. We can with the roads.
I don't know why we would want to hang on to that land if we can make a deal with the county and spread the quarter million dollars across the tax base. What's the point? Why are we hanging on to it? Unless we have higher and better use in mind, which I don't think we do.
I certainly don't have a problem, because the cost is going up and up and up, and we've been told to be budgeting a lot of money for light replacement over the next five years. A lot of money. So, if we can get that off the table, I have no problem with having Chris initiate a conversation with Lake County Parks and Rec, get started with it.
Anyway, that's my thought, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Could you ask Dan for a question, please?
Yeah, sure.
I'm very interested, frankly. But do I understand correctly that, do you think that we ought to just give to Lake County that land over there?
No.
So, we should not charge, we should not ask any remuneration for that plant?
Okay, but a good point. Transfer ownership, I didn't mention a dollar figure. Good, okay.
I'm not asking for a dollar figure, I'm just asking for your thought level.
Okay, here's my thought level. I agree that that's very important consideration. If you're in Lake County's position, and you're wanting to build up more soccer facilities, and you're looking for a piece of property like this, you're going to have to pay a significant amount of money, not just to buy the property, but to make it into, into the facility that we have here, which is excellent. So, wouldn't make sense to transfer it for a buck, if that's what you're thinking. But I, but I think that's negotiable. That's all I can say, because you have to, you have to say, "Here it is, it's lock, stock, and barrel turnkey versus you started from ground up. So, how about making, making a deal? And as long as that deal is attractive to them and ours, why not do it?"
We have past experience, we gave them a wastewater treatment plant for next attempt, why wouldn't we do it?
Well, there is that. There is that.
We did it once, why wouldn't we bite it twice?
But we weren't paying quarter million dollars residence money. I don't know what, I forgot what the 2003 numbers were for the plans, but I know we're paying quarter million dollars a year here, and it's under burden of just Gateway, and I don't think that's very fair, considering nearly half of the kids don't come from here.
Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, at the risk of sounding like we're negotiating against ourselves, one issue is the board decided to report and have a preliminary discussion, the idea about consideration of getting money back for it. Recall that Lake County Park Impact, he's not paid for some fiscal debt, I'll prove. So, I'm sure Lake County has not forgotten.
Anyone else sign up to speak here?
No.
Madam Chairperson, could I ask one more question before you go to the next piece of business?
Is it about kids?
Yes. It is. It wasn't clear to the board members who left, they had to go to other meetings, whether or not Tony's going to send a document for an indemnification.
No.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. 3A purchase of modular office building and rehab of existing office.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll take this item. This is basically for consideration that we've been exploring and started the development order process to put a modular office building and also rehabilitation of our existing office. And I've been working with a vendor on a modular building that's basically a turnkey approach that has all the office furniture, and it has the cabling in it, and the lead time is about 10 to 12 weeks once you put a deposit down and order that building. And I've also laid out financial aspects. We have $350,000 in the enterprise fund, $165,000 in the general fund, and with the budget I've put together for both those items, the purchase of the new building and the rehab of the existing one, we could do that entirely with the enterprise fund money and have the general fund money left. And that also includes costs for power and us paying our own water and sewer pack fees, the engineering cost fields and permanent. The building itself is $130,000. The IT side, I've got it $18,500. Site prep, landscaping, sidewalk, so the investment in the new building would be $215,000. And then I put in $30,000 to rehab this existing office, which is new flooring and painting, general upkeep. Some new recording equipment that we're actually looking at right now, it is closed caption, pole barn for outside to put our generators and mobile equipment on, and also rehab for an inventory and tool area in the back. It's basically paging and shelving for our parts and equipment with $115,000 investment there, contingency, and at 15... there, contingency at 15%. So total at $380,000, and we have $385,000 budgeted. We do have the permitting side with the development order underway. One caveat I'd say is we get approval today to do this, to wait until those permits are in hand until we order the building. We don't want to order it, they're going to be bringing it in 10 meters from that time, and everything's not working.
Go ahead.
I agree with everything he's got except the way it's paid.
Get away, please.
I agree with everything he's got except the way it's paid. I do not believe we should set a precedence, breaking precedence of the manner of which we charge for this building at this present time. And until we get our new assessment methodology, at the minimum, I would say it's split 70, 20, 10. 70% out of enterprise, 20% out of O-01, and 10% out of O-02.
Sure. I can see that, I can bring it back. That's not a problem at all.
I would agree to take out the permits, fill it up, and rush out to purchase anything. If it's like some problems it's running into or in Gateway Greens, those permits seem to be hard to get.
It's because they're busy.
Too worried about lime rock mining.
Mr. Guy.
Thank you. Would you please tell me the status of the notices to the RV and boat owners on this property that we're discussing?
We provided preliminary notices to all the owners and also been working with Tony on the second and the final notice. We basically let them know that July 15th would be the last day they could have any vehicles on the property.
Righty-doo.
Yes, sir. July 12th is the day we provided, and I've personally talked to six of the folks out there.
And?
Well, they're particularly happy. It's more of an issue of convenience and also that the market out there is two to possibly three times what we're charging at present. We really haven't changed our rates for-
We might want to relook at the ROI on that needle down here then, boost our, boost our rent up.
And what's the status of the bids for the yuppies?
Those were published this week.
They were published?
Yes, they went out in the paper, so by the end of the month, the bid should be here in 30-day bid period.
I just thought there was water back there.
There's water everywhere.
There's boats, but no water.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mrs. Flaherty, I just wanted to say thank you for the detail because this was very easy to tell how much this is going to cost and where the money, what the money was going to be spent on, so I appreciated that. Do you want to bring this back for the 50% deposit?
Yeah, we can bring it back another time, and I am moving forward with rehabbing the sound and video equipment in here. We're actually looking at some that does closed caption, so we solved the ADA and the note-taking quite rapidly.
Very good.
So I'll bring it back some next-
Does that include SAP general?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this item? Staff report, Mr. Counsel.
Yes, I see Mr. Evolini is here. Mark, if I understand, he's the attorney general of Lee Health. He's the gentleman that I haven't talked to in a long time, reached me with an email saying, hey, we think our property is exempt, Tony. I mean, it's very kind the way you had served up email. Provided memorandum to the board.
I saw the hammer behind his back.
Well, I have a saw too. I got a bigger hammer. Mark and I have known each other for what, 20 or more years?
Yes.
And so hopefully we've had an opportunity to apologize for length of it, but I wanted to provide substantial details so the board would understand that Lee Health owns a number of properties in the county. And Mark, if you don't mind me telling the board how this came about, apart from Gateway, that Lee Health this past year had not been paying taxes on a substantial number of its properties owned around Lake County until last year, and then they started getting taxes for this for their properties from the tax collector, and they said, basically, what's going on with property? And come to find out, apparently there's a transition in the software staffing into Lee County Property Appraiser and our tax collector office, so all of Lee Health's properties were put back on the tax rolls with values. And so then the staff and the personnel at Lee Health and possibly Mark's office got involved in double checking every property that they owned, that Lee Health owned, and then came across this property in Gateway that Lee Health owns. And that's when they, Mark indicated that Lee Health realized they had been paying assessments on this property since the time of their acquisition.
Okay, stop you right there.
Yeah.
You're interchanging tax and assessment.
Assessment.
And you say that to me all the time.
No, but what I'm saying is that it came because of the tax bills they were getting.
But the tax bills from other communities?
Taxes and assessments, they were getting both.
Okay, but we don't have a tax.
That's correct. But I'm saying that they were getting, that they were getting taxes and tax bills, and they noticed this, they get a tax bill, but it's just the assessment that was on it. That's what it was from the tax collector, because we used the tax collector as the tracking process. And so Mark said, he believed that they were exempt under that case. I disagree that that's the case. That provides the opportunity, but it raises the issue about them being exempt because Lee Health is similar to a CDD, an independent special district of the state of Florida. They have a different charter. Their charter is a special act that's been codified, I think what, 2003 was codified. And that's their charter. 190 is our charter. Yes, Mrs. Flaherty?
I'm waiting for you to finish.
Okay. And so my recommendation would be that on a go-forward basis, beginning with this year's assessment mean role, that the district may be positioned to not assess Lee Health for the district's special assessments.
Is this one strap?
Uh, yes.
One strap?
Yeah. Two.
Two straps, side to side?
Commonwealth and Fairway Slot, Lakes Drive, apparently.
It's just, it's just on the-
No, take it back, one, just one.
Just on the east side of the road when you come in off the road.
Just one. I was referencing the two. The two is actually South Trail Fire District, has two parcels which we do not afford any assessments on, ever since they acquired. Yes, ma'am. That's my recommendation. And as I mentioned in my email, Mark is not asking for any refund. I would suggest that if they ask for a refund, we have a basis to challenge refund. Mark, we disagree.
Lee Memorial is a not-for-profit public health system, is this correct?
That's how they characterize themselves, but they are an independent special district. They're a governmental body.
Because they had a profit of $70 million in 2017?
They are a governmental body.
I mean, if you're not-for-profit and you get $70 million valid profit?
I don't know. I have not looked at their 990s, if they have to file 990s, but they're a governmental body.
That's public record, 2017.
Those are public funds. Funds that-
Phil, I guess Mark Evolini, Mark, I approach the man, Chair, if you allow me, as the spokesperson for Lee Health.
Just as a matter-
We'll give Mark a two-minute clock.
Yeah, as a matter of clarification. Mark Evolini, I am on the, along with Jim Humphrey, the counsel for the Board of Directors of the Hospital District, Lee Memorial Health. And the district is, as Tony stated, a special purpose unit of local government that was actually created first in 1963, and then their special act was last codified in 2000. Any funds which Lee Health owns are part of that health system fund, which is for the benefit of all of Lake County. So, you know, while the system may operate at a profit, i.e. it has a net profit, operating profit, those funds are not going to, in order to any shareholders or private interests. The money remains in the health system's governmental funds that are used for, you know, funding the various purposes and keeping the hospitals open as, you know, the hospitals that are of last resort and hospitals that don't turn anyone away.
What do you have, about three acres there?
The property has the office building on it, and I think it's about two, two acres.
Okay, so two, two times five, five, eleven, and we're charging 700, so it's a little less than $10,000 a year.
Right. Or nine thousand each.
I'm going to give the floor back to Mrs. Flaherty. She said she doesn't- So you stated that the $70 million profit from 2017 stays in, doesn't go to salaries for the, um-
Sure, we pay, obviously have to pay staff and salaries and, yeah, definitely.
So did they personally get a raise because of the $70 million profit?
I don't, I don't have that information, obviously. I think everything that happens as far as the workers and the staff are, you know, their meetings are public just like yours are. I mean, you're welcome to attend, many people do. Usually it's, you know, standing room almost, but all of that's, you know, well and open for your, and there's a website, of course, that has all this information if you want. But the bottom line is, those are governmental funds, they're not some private funds that in order to people who aren't interested, and there's no private interests in-
Mrs. Flaherty, again, just for clarification, I know you may have some more questions, but the members of the board, governing board for the health system, I think there are 10 of them, and they're elected by the voters, registered voters in Lake County, so they're just a governmental body. Mark, are they subject to GASP, the Government Accounting Standards Board, accounting standards, and audited, just like the district is audited?
Yes.
Mrs. Flaherty? Do you have other?
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Mr. Guy would ask next, so.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. While I believe that the Health District should be tax and assessment exempt, I would ask that if this property is rented or leased out to a private for-profit organization at any time in the future, that you would notify either us or the property tax collector of that fact.
Well, in fact, I'll tell you right now that that's one thing we do every year. There's a tax assessment administrator in the property appraisers' office, and what we do every, every year is we have staff members provide them with a list of properties that are in fact, you know, there are certain office buildings and mostly office buildings, they may have other offices or, you know, be a private practice, and we provide that list of leases, and we are in fact, do have, we do pay ad valorem taxes and special assessments on the portions of the building based upon those, those leases. So, you know, there's no question that, that those are in fact, and of course, obviously the district makes the effort to include that type in a CAM when they, of course, lease to the private entities that are profit-making. But, you know, there's no question that that is something that is accounted for by the property appraiser in their assessment methodology. You know, they ask us, we report to them leases, and we have paid partial ad valorem taxes on buildings in which there are leased to agencies that are not, not-for-profit agencies, i.e. profit-making entities.
That, that sounds perfect. But that leads me to the question of if it's so perfect, why are you here and not at the property tax collector's office?
Because in this case, there is a non-ad valorem tax, which is the assessments at issue here, and obviously, we need to, you, your, your district reports your assessment role to the tax collector to go, you know, tax, and therefore we need to talk to you to say, we don't think you have the ability to do that, and we can't ask them because they're just getting their reporting from you. So we needed, the appropriate place to start was here with the district.
That's great. Thank you.
And what Mr. Guy, the following up on your, your comment is, all those leases would be public record. And so, Mark, if you can make the representation and assurance to this board, following up on Mr. Guy's question, if our leases between any private sector, third parties for any portion of this building, would you like, send them to me and to Chris Schumaker?
Sure.
And because right now it's being totally utilized by Lee Health, is my understanding?
Yes, and I confirmed that, or Tony asked the question, you know, and that question was asked and we responded.
And then Chris confirmed, and I think once they did, all the utility accounts are currently in Lee Health's name for that building.
Mr., oh, Mr. Turney, you, you put this voluminous item in our agenda for trying out, but I didn't see any motion or anything else in there that you were recommending that we make in order to effectuate this business.
There would be, uh, well, it's basically, I guess, I would say that the board, to my opinion, the above referenced Lee Health property is currently exempt from the lien of the GSCED special assessment. So I think the appropriate request, and then recommend that they make a refund request and challenge them on that, but I think the immediate action would be that the board direct the staff during the preparation of the assessment role for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, that based upon the facts we have today, this property would be listed as exempt from the district's special assessment.
And I was going to make that motion.
And that's what I was, I was going to see if you had a question or-
That was a motion I was going to make.
Go ahead. They, I'm sorry. They still pay for the water, right?
Water, sure, that's correct.
They pay for that.
They pay, do pay, and they will pay in future all enterprise funds.
Utility fees, and that's the case, I was very clear on that. And that leads to the other discussion we will be having, is outlined in paragraph three of my-
I don't really want to make too much of a public statements, but I do want to point out that, you know, there are a lot of hospital districts that are across the state of Florida, many of them actually render and have the rights to add valorem tax the citizens of the county, some in the northeast and some in central Florida. There's no ad valorem tax that's assessed to the residents of Lake County by, or property owners of Lake County by the-
You don't have that authority.
No.
So will you repeat the motion that Mr. Beagle made?
That the board direct the staff in the preparation of the assessment role for 2019, 2020 fiscal year, to list the property on, under, with no random, only by the help, as being exempt from the district's special assessment.
Do I have a second?
I have, I will second that, and I'd like for them to consider building a hospital out here.
With the traffic.
Yeah, with the triangle stars we need.
Okay, we have a motion on this floor.
The silence by Mr. Evolini was definite.
Well, we're, we're subject to, of course, a certificate of need process, which is still-
I think you would have some support.
I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
We've got to make sure that gets to Stephen, who-
Yeah. And that leads us to the minutes of April 4th.
Mark, it's okay, this board doesn't do what other commissions do, they don't change their mind after you leave.
Are we going to, are we going to come back to Tony? Because I guess-
I could-
Tony and the interview.
Let's go ahead and handle this, and then you can, I'll start with you for supervisor comments, so that we get all the regular agenda items handled. Anybody have any changes to the minutes of April 4th?
That was two weeks ago.
Yes.
I asked, what change? Somebody light a fire somewhere? Never got them that fast.
The last meeting, the minutes were in the board book from the previous meeting.
To the right.
So, efficiency in the recording, a little bit better job and effort on the part of the infomark staff, appreciate it.
With nobody signaling they have any changes in the minutes?
Motion to approve, you can say it, Chair.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes care of all the regular business. Mr. Beagle, I said I'd start with you for supervisor comments. Go ahead.
I've got a turn. First, following up on what Rod Senior brought up, I'd make the motion for Chris-
Well, why don't you just, if you want to have an action item, introduce the topic and allow the members of the board to-
I think that should be made a regular agenda item for discussion on this. I don't think we should make a motion to move ahead with it. I think we should have an opportunity to discuss it and have on-
We're not spending any money, we're just having him make a contact so we get information.
I understand.
That doesn't need a separate meeting.
I think that the public should see it on an agenda, and we should have a discussion.
If he can answer a question because we haven't done the research, you know, like we're, we're going to tell him. I mean, you're getting the cart to the head of the horse. Asking him to go out and collect information and then to come back is the appropriate way of doing it. Again, I make the motion.